So I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. The Town Planning Board is having a workshop meeting this evening to discuss the proposed changes, I guess, to Chapter 217 regarding subdivision of land and also some proposed changes that were sent to us regarding Local Law Number Three, which regard changes to Chapter 240 zoning. So while we're, I guess, oh, we still have more members coming in, but when we start, I guess, with discussion on Local Law Number Two. And we got, I don't know if anybody's reviewed the current definition versus the proposed definitions that are in here. So maybe have some discussion, I guess, regarding that to start.
Because I thought, to me anyway, since you're more familiar with the subdivision rules, Local Law Three was much more straightforward and I thought it made, I got it, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Local Law Two, I just don't understand as well as kind of work with the subdivision rules.
Yeah. So want to go through, I don't know if everybody bring your, I know we asked Barbara to go make copies of a memo that received from Malcolm or Planner. But I guess with that, I mean, we could take a look at the proposed Local Law Number Two that was provided from the town clerk. But it seems like the items in red, seems that there's only a couple of items here that were supposedly changed. One was a collector.
Thanks.
There, thank you.
Thank you.
That's sure original.
Yeah.
And the county had, planning had commented on Local Law Two.
Yes.
Not on Three.
Yeah, and I believe they also did have the same comments regarding the terminology. There was, yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple.
There was a couple of things they had in there. Buildable area, they should include reference to the chapter, this is Chapter 217, but appears references Chapter 240 zoning. Seems to be some irregularities. So, I mean, I think they've had some of the similar issues. So, I don't know if we want to go off the Local Law itself. I mean, but I guess the, just in itself, I mean, they have the title. You know, Section One, the title, it's Chapter 217, you know, subdivision of land, not zoning. As you brought up before, legislative attempt is the same thing. You know, it's not zoning, it's subdivision of land. Section Three, again, we're down to, you know, same thing, it's just, you know, the wrong terminology being carried through. You know, the word usages, I guess those are, I think those are currently in, just see. It seems like, you know, the six, let's see what it is here. 217-9A, word usage, I guess it's pretty much an addition. An addition to the section, which is just saying what the difference is between, you know, shall and may.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I know there, and I think Malcolm's memo pointed out some of this, that what's in Local Law One, some of these changes should be reflected in the zoning code as well, in 240, so that they're consistent.
Yep.
You know, the definitions there. Maybe we could walk through Malcolm's memo as a starting point?
Okay.
Sure.
Would you go ahead, Malcolm, start?
Yeah. The county addresses my comment one in more specifics, they call out specific examples. But an observation that I made looking through Local Law Number Two is that there are a couple of terms that are being introduced with definitions that don't get used in the subdivision code. And there are a couple of terms that are getting deleted from the subdivision definitions because the way that this Local Law Number Two is drafted, this list will replace the existing list. We're not adding these terms. This is what this list is going to read as. I don't think there are any red flags as far as the terms that are getting deleted, but I was curious about the terms that are getting introduced that don't appear in the subdivision code.
Which ones are those?
Cluster, clustering, I mean, there's several. The Duchess County Planning called it out very specifically, but buildable area, buildable lot, buildable yield, all of those are terms that don't get used anywhere currently in the subdivision code. Clustering is another one. Curbs, streets, et cetera, we have a Chapter 214 that are going, is going to use those terms, but the subdivision code doesn't really use that, those terms. Disturbance is a term that's getting defined in 217, it doesn't get used. Same with interior lot. And there isn't anything improper about that, it's only unusual in the sense that typically when we see code revisions, there's a regulatory element of it, you're changing an element of the code and how the code works. And when you're changing that, you're also introducing or changing definitions to make sure that that element of the code that is being introduced is going to be interpreted the way that you're intending it to be. So it leads me to wonder whether or not there will be elements of the code in the future that we just haven't seen yet.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
We'll use the definitions.
Yeah. And if, again, there isn't anything inherently improper about that, it's just unusual that, you know, typically when you are passing those elements of the code, you do the definitions at the same time because you want to make sure that they fit with what you're drafting at that time. And then there are, I guess, more specific examples like open space. Open space, or I mentioned this in my comment number one, right? Buildable lot, buildable area, buildable yield, all of these feel like they are addressing the concept of net lot area, which I think is something that exists in zoning in 240, but doesn't exist in the subdivision code. And there are certain elements in those definitions that I'm curious what that actually means, right? Buildable yield uses a phrase after deduction of constrained land areas. What is included in that? Net lot area has a definition in zoning, but that wouldn't apply to the subdivision code. And so if we're going to have a concept of net lot area, or if these three terms are going to be included in a calculation of net lot area in the subdivision code in the future, we might want to add a definition for net lot area. Or look at what that mechanism is going to look like and add specificity to those definitions. Same thing goes with clustering, right? Clustering is being introduced as a defined term in the subdivision code. We have a couple of different cluster subdivisions in the zoning code, but nothing like that in the subdivision code. And the various forms of the cluster subdivision that we have in the zoning code don't actually use that term. They're called other things.
It's a matter of terms. When I first started on board, which wasn't that long ago, we were looking at the development, actually it's up near Ryhov, Cedar Hill. And that was taking out all the unique features and the natural resources, coming up with kind of developable land, if you want to do a single family zone, and it came up with a projection of how many units perhaps could be built. So wetlands were taken out, things like that. How does that relate to this?
Well, it, what they were looking to pursue was called a conservation subdivision, which exists in the zoning code. That mechanism doesn't exist in Chapter 217.
So it's a, it's just a terminology then? I mean, you could use the clustering in both places, right? And achieve the same?
Sure. It's just, it's a definition for a term that doesn't show up in the code. We call it clustering because that's sort of a more familiar term and a more general term. But the section for conservation subdivision doesn't actually use that term.
Yeah.
And so...
It just uses a more specific term.
Yeah.
For different kinds of clusters.
It's describing the same thing with different words, and so it's a definition for a term that doesn't get used in the zoning code or in the subdivision code, yet.
Right, and that's also being introduced in Local Law Number Three, the changing of that, you know, from conservation subdivision to clustering. And that's, you know, that's, you know, basically it's a play on words. It's almost why not just leave it as a conservation subdivision and enhance the definitions within that, within that section? You know, because if you're going to conserve land, because that's the purpose of it. The purpose of it is to figure out how much they can conventionally get on a piece of property. So if they could come up with 50, you know, if they come up with 50 lots conventionally, and then they can turn around and they can, you know, let's say they can get relief and put, let's say, on smaller lots, you know, and they can do it on half the property and conserve the other half as open space or, you know, forever green land that's never going to be touched, then that makes it a benefit. Clustering is that basically that same thing. You know, as I explained during that process, it's basically the same process. You're just trying to take the, what units would be allowed conventionally and just putting that on a smaller piece of land. And then, you know, through the, you know, restrictions on the land, it would never, the rest of that property would never get developed again.
Yeah.
You know, so it would be forever green. And I think that's the, you know, I mean, I think that's the better approach in changing everything to, and then changing all your terminology to clustering, why, you know, why change it? Just enhance what you have, I mean, that's basically what it comes down to.
Since the supervisor's here, why don't we allow him to discuss his intent behind this before we start rambling on about?
Sure.
That might clear things up on our end here.
If you wish, you want to come on up and give us a little, if you want to give us a little input on what's, you know, on this, because again, it's, you know, I find it, you know, it's a little difficult to follow.
Just the reasoning behind it, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this one in particular, or are we talking about?
Well, we want to start with, let's, you want to start with, let's start with, stay with Local Law Number Two.
Yeah.
And let's kind of get, let's go through Local Law Number Two and kind of get that put, you know, put to bed, and then maybe if we got extra time, we'll go on to Local Law Number Three.
Absolutely. First, thank you, Mayor Flower and members of the planning board for this opportunity. Being involved in town government for as long as I have, I don't recall ever seeing something like this as thorough and as transparent in going over a law change. I know that this was not done in the past, whether it was considering 90,000 gallons of propane storage or gas station restrictions being provoked from the town. So I do appreciate your thorough input on this and your transparency to the public. Just jumping in off of your comments on changing conservation subdivision or development to cluster, what we ended up doing was mimicking and mirroring that to New York State Consolidated Town Law, Section 278. New York State Code, which ultimately supersedes general municipal code here in the town of Wapanger, does call for a cluster subdivision. So what we were trying to do was standardize that language to what we see in the state. That's simply that 278 section, I'd be happy to provide that as well to the planning board. One thing I'd like to note too on Malcolm's note, thank you Malcolm for your memo as well. All of the comments that were taken into account by Duchess County Planning on Local Law Two were in fact input into the code currently. So I don't know if you folks were able to get a copy of that yet, I assume the town clerk sent it out, I believe it's sent to each one of you directly.
Yeah, I think we saw, I saw.
Yeah, so each one of Duchess County Planning's comments have now been put directly into that code. So a lot of what Malcolm had recommended is already in there now. I just want to raise those two points there on your Local Law Two.
There's so much paper.
Oh, of course, listen, that's what this podium is filled with right now. But yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone was understood there. Open space, we did also, again, per the county, move that around as well. What else was there? Definition for a town plan, comprehensive plan, that again was something that was considered from the CPL draft that was provided to, made by Barbara, that was something that was looked at in the past. Collector Road and Collector Street, those definitions were amended, again, based on recommendations from Duchess County. Originally, we're looking at collector roads being state routes and county routes, per the recommendation of Duchess County. They said that the true definition of a collector road is a county road. So we were able to input that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Does it make sense to, in our code, also include state roads as part of that? And then change the comp plan to be consistent with?
It very well could. Again, I think we were trying to be as amenable to everyone to see that this is something that everyone's comfortable with. But if the planning board would like to recommend state routes, absolutely. To quote the prior town attorney, it was rather ambiguous, you know, it was not clearly defined here in the town of Wapanger what a collector road was, and that's what we were trying to do. So initially, the town board, we were looking to include state and county routes as collectors. If the planning board would like to give that recommendation as well, that is something that we are open to. Again, you know, especially now with large subdivisions and large housing projects, a collector road is what collects these developments. And quite frankly, we know that smaller town roads, you know, would not be able to handle that, like Rockingham, for example, you know, so we want to clearly define those areas. I know I just kind of jumped in as to where you guys were talking, but was there anywhere else, Chairman, or members of the planning?
Chairman, does that satisfy, does it make sense what your search warrant, what you just said?
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we got, you know, listen, you have all this here and you only have a few lines in red, right? But these are the current definitions here, so we have a lot of deletions from this, and we're going to this.
Well, I don't believe anything was deleted from there. Okay, I was going to say, we can get, we can get the specifics.
So, I mean, obviously, I mean...
But there was nothing of substance, I mean, really nothing.
This is the current, this is the current town, this is the current town code.
Yeah.
Right? So, and then this one here is based upon, you know, more or less is the code that was proposed a year ago.
Yes.
So they just took all the definitions out of there.
Yes.
And that's where all the confusion comes in, that's why the county, everybody seems to be having problems finding, finding where these words are being used and...
Yeah, and again, they could be eventually added, as was noted earlier, into later sections of the code. Just for way of background, the prior supervisor and the director of strategic planning and the town attorney had been working with CPL on a code change. Basically, what it was going to do was repeal all of the pages of subdivision code, completely wipe those out, and then put in sections of code from, I believe, Kent, Poughkeepsie, Fish Gill, and then redlined sections of that code out. When we went through that code, which was not discussed, we uncovered that, yeah, just wiped out all of the town of Wapanger code in existence and then replaced it with that. We were not ready to jump into that entire discussion of the subdivision code just yet because we want to have time to go through that, make sure everyone has input on it. But the definitions were very valuable, especially when it comes to open space, things like that, collector road. So we wanted to take the first step. And as we've been very transparent at town board meetings, we don't want to do what was done in the past, a variety of matters in a sense of all these different sections of code, and people getting lost in it, we want to say, all right, we're taking the first step. Right now, we know the town code is filled with contradictions as it stands right now, it doesn't have to be touched. So what we're trying to do is make the first, take the first step to fixing these contradictions. Again, you know, New York State Municipal Home Rule, Section 20-3, you know, says every local law needs to be specific to that purpose. And that's something that really sticks out to me. We want to make sure that we are focused on a certain topic, which is definitions, or in Local Law Number Three, zoning issues, and really stay to those pieces there. So I think with Local Law Number Two is just kind of dipping our toe in the water, getting everyone's collective input and saying, all right, this is what we're looking to do. All right? And going from there. And again, based on the conversations that we're going to have during this process, which during the moratorium, we eloquently stated in Local Law Number One, we were going to have forums like this, something that's never happened before, and get input and then bring it back. So, you know, if, you know, we wanted to continue that conversation with, let's say, you know, we would like to see this added into Local Law Number Four, then that's great. That's what we were looking to obtain here tonight.
Just, there's another, listen, there's just a couple of things. The change from, you know, engineer to the town.
Yes.
Just, you know, the definition was changed to engineer or town engineer. But within that definition, it includes the superintendent of highways as an engineer. I think that's a conflict because, you know, usually an engineer is a, you know, license P. They're reviewing the work of a, you know, another license P who's submitting the document. By giving that definition, he should have his own definition as the superintendent of highways, as he was in the old version. I think, I mean, that might be something too that might be, should be considered.
Absolutely.
Only because it gives the, you know, going forward and as he's signing off on a site plan as opposed to the actual town engineer signing off.
So one thing that we did, we looked around at other municipalities as well. We seem to be very reliant on consultants in the town of Wapanger. And it's been a conversation I've had with Director Abertie as well. You know, and other towns might not be as reliant on the consultants. So I think also allowing the highway superintendent the authority, under his office, under his duly elected authority.
And he's got this whole, he's got this whole authority under town law.
Correct.
Regarding, you know, the public roads and things like that, but when it comes to subdivision, he's reviewing the actual road in the subdivision, but he's not reviewing, you know, everything else that's within that, you know, out, off, anything that's off the road, that's not within his purview.
And he does also take care of the drainage distance.
Right, the storm drains as well, the storm drains do, but then again, you know, the water and sewer, if it's installed, that also falls under a licensed P, so.
Absolutely.
That should be separate, you know, just one of my observations.
Yeah.
You know, again...
I had one question.
Go ahead.
I haven't seen the most recent draft, the one with the changes. We had some comments about the two different definitions of open space. I was curious which one, because you said that you had moved it, I think, if I understood you correctly, from subdivision to zoning. Are you keeping the definition that was proposed for 217?
I believe that we are taking that definition as well, keeping it basically, and then also taking in the county's comments as well.
Okay.
So yes, it's basically staying as the same concept, taking their comments and moving it over into zoning.
And moving it over into zoning.
If I'm understanding what you're saying right.
I think so. I just, because I know that in Local Law Number Three, there were, there is an existing definition for open space. There were changes proposed to it. I think that the one that was proposed in 217, I think it's better. I think it has a lot of specificity, a lot of detail.
And that's what we were trying to do. So for example, we grabbed that one from the town of Southampton.
Yeah, yeah.
And so each one of these, and working with, of course, the town attorney, we looked at other municipalities that have strong, you know, sections of code that we were looking for. There's even a section on alienation. So we want to make sure that anything that has protected open space in the town of Wapanger is truly protected.
Yeah.
Can't be sold off, can't be anything like that. So now that calls for a new process in the town of a public referendum to sell off or to vacate any open space that's been designated by the town. So that was also something that we received from another town.
And then that can play into any changes to clustered subdivisions in the future that require the creation of open space.
Absolutely.
I did have questions about that definition for open space. It goes through a lot of specifics, and two things that you might want to consider including in those would be whether or not areas that are required, additional areas for buffering or screening, that some sections of the code require the planning board to designate areas for buffering or screening, whether or not that is open space. My recommendation would be no. And then areas that are encumbered by easement.
Encumbered by what?
Easement. Whether that is, you know, and a third one would be the distinction between wetlands and wetland buffer areas. Is a wetland buffer area open space or not? Or should it qualify for a certain percentage of your open space requirements, right? But just...
Should be something.
Just, just three ideas, three areas that somebody in the future could try to claim is open space and you may not...
We want to make sure that we're as tight as possible.
Exactly.
I like those recommendations, Malcolm.
Because often, open space becomes what is left over.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be what it is.
And that's just it, that's how we've got through.
In that vein, I just have a couple, I have a question about how wetlands are treated with regard to open space. I mean, I understand they're not developable, but the preservation of those wetlands is, you know, it's a unique feature. It's covered under other parts of that proposed definition. So I wasn't sure what is in the proposal as it has to do with wetlands.
Yeah, this was intended to be in addition to wetlands. Because the town of Wapanger, we have some of the strongest wetlands protections in the state. This is supposed to be in addition to that and really identify key areas that need to be preserved outside the open space buffers. One thing that we are looking to add in the future is also when you, when you enter into a neighborhood, this was done in the past, the corner lots were given special treatment, you know, in terms of design plan. They're set back X amount of hundreds of feet from the road, you don't see them. So if you're traveling down along this collector road, let's say Old Hopewell Road, perfect example is Kendall Farms. You don't see Kendall Farms from the road. Or if you're going up All Angels Hill Road past, you know, Stonewall Drive, you don't see the neighborhood, it's buffered back. Those were examples of good planning, in our opinion, and happened to just be, I guess, what the developer wanted to do at the time. Kendall Farms is a conservation park district, so that's a little different. We want to go away from those conservation park districts and let's say, there's a conservation easement on the two corner lots that set the house back X amount of feet this way, there's buffering, there's tree protection, and it's protecting that view shed along the corridor that the subdivision may be disrupting. So that's something in addition that we're looking to do as well. But Malcolm, I welcome your comments, I think that they would be welcomed additions as well.
Yeah. The other one that I had, there was a lot of attention being paid to Collector Road, and I just wanted to double check whether or not this got taken out, because I remember there being a big issue with the lack of definition, or the lack of specificity for major road. That that came up in a couple of places, that that hasn't really, that wasn't designated, that was designated at one point in '72 or something like that, and hasn't been clarified since.
The major road definition?
The major road definition, yes. That that had come up, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as we are redefining collector and looking at what that means, we might want to look at that, you know, is a major road a collector road? Are they two different things? Do we want to scrap one and go with the other?
Well, I think in the earlier codes, certain streets would have been considered collector roads. And then since the comp plan, it was county roads. So then there was some talk with a subdivision that was proposed where I'd have to make an interpretation, and I think we should, since we're having this opportunity, we should solidify that a collector road is a county and or state road.
Absolutely. Okay. On that note earlier, I think that state roads, or the two state roads that we have would be called arterials, arterial roads, which are, I mean, all of these...
What are the two? Was this...
Well, we have, we use these terms in our own code, but they do have other definitions under state regulation and law. And sometimes things like that can get muddied. I mean, collector roads have various... the state level. As far as design and function, we have our own. In the system that was created to sort of catalog the infrastructure, the transportation infrastructure over the town. But that is what I would guess. And I think that that is probably how the comp plan discusses nine and 9D as arteries with the county roads, as collectors that, you know, local traffic from local town roads end up on the collectors to get to the arteries which go in and out of town.
I mean, that's something that we can definitely continue to look at and make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to any sort of liability by doing that.
Or creating a contradiction unintentionally. Yeah. I just want to double check. I think that's it for.
Well, he's looking at that, a definition, or I think we should take buffers for wetlands and define that strongly, because it's not strong now. And too many people are coming in. We don't have a lot of usable land left. So we have a lot of developers trying to come in and ask for waivers for the buffers. And I think this is a good time, while you're doing these codes, to make it very strong. And it would be up to, I guess, the town board to decide, how much could possibly be waived? Is it 10%, 20%? But the way the code is, we have some people looking to, they think the planning board can waive at 100%. And I think we really have to give it either not to be waived at all, or a very small number. And that would help this board, not the others.
Yeah, I mean, that falls back to the solar farm. That was the most recent one.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it just, you know, they want to take, they want to cut back 100% of the buffer and then replace it with, you know, with 10% of what was there. I think that's, you know, to be clearer about it, it should be much stronger. I agree with Barbara. It does need to be stronger, just to say, okay, well, maybe the first 25%, maybe something that possibly could be encroached. And then as you, the further you get in, it's going to have to be a much, you know, a much, much more reviewed process.
Absolutely.
In order to get it, maybe adding an additional layer of review, just because of the fact that you want to go, you know, further in. That way, you know, to kind of discourage them from doing it.
Less of the conflict of it.
Yeah, which is not allowing.
Yeah.
And there's, right, and it's like, you know, if you really want to do it, then maybe you have to go to another level. I'm not sure what, you know, how to make that work. I don't know if it could be referred back to the, you know, the town board. It may have to even go to the zoning board. It might be something like that. We pretty much make it very strong that they can only go in so far, you know, and then they would have to go to the zoning or, you know, to get, to get that relief. We're only, let's say it gives us relief to the first 25%. And anything above 25% buffer encroachment would have to go to the ZBA for some type of, you know, variance.
Or, or the town board for another level of disturbance.
Right, exactly. I mean, because, you know, then you can do something like that, because it's just, you know, it makes it difficult. I agree, you know, with Barbara, we had, you know, the solar farm, if they come back, you know, we'll see how it happens. But they, you know, and they were 100%. They just want, you know, no disregard to what was there. Let's just cut down all the trees. Let's cut everything down. And we're just going to go as far as we can. And, you know, we'll replace it with some, you know, some low lying bushes, you know, for 10%. It didn't seem right.
Wiping out, you know, all this open space and.
What's the sense of having a buffer?
There's a purpose for the buffer. We have to tighten it up so that the wordplay from the attorneys can't use it against us.
And that's one thing I've seen over the years of watching your meetings or participating in them, is that there's a lot of room for debate, let's say. And that's what I'm trying to do right now, and the town board as well, is, is make it very clear what is wanted and what is not wanted in Wapanger. What is the avenue that you can take to get there and, you know, so on and so forth.
Where are you pushing?
This is your roadmap, in a sense. It's the town code.
Yeah.
Not coming to the planning board and polling you guys and leaving you up in the air with what you can do. And that's not right to you. It's not fair to you. And we're putting you in a bad position. So that's what we're looking to do.
Yeah. I agree on the buffer. As long as there's some flexibility built in.
We also don't want to.
The planning board to, to be able to accommodate good projects.
Yeah, I'm just, you also don't want to give them a path that, hey, they got the rust, and they go to the town board and get it. But we don't want to do that either.
Right, right.
Yeah, there should be an absolute.
Right.
And I say an absolute if the town board agrees, so that you don't put that on the zoning board, that they now have to deal with it. If it's absolute, you give this board a little wiggle room in the matter of good design. And then that's it. The project won't work there. Don't bother.
What's the point of having a buffer if there's nothing to do with?
If it's a definition, you just go on top.
We don't have anything to defend.
Or everyone comes in and says.
If you have an attorney come in and say, all right, you have this law, that's great. I want to remove a 100% of it. Which is what happened with a particular proposal.
Yeah. It's not the first time it's happened. It's, we've had other, we've had other subdivisions that come in where they wanted to, you know, clear everything as far back as they can, because if they do that, they can, you know, they can squeeze in an extra lot or something like that.
Yeah, there's just.
We've no better discussion as far as how far we're willing to go with that, percentage-wise of the buffer. Have a, this is the cutoff point, what we can waive, you know?
Yeah. Well, I think, I think it's, well, I think, I mean, again, the way it's learned today, it's, we can waive 100% if we want it to.
Right.
But, you know, to have something more put in here that make it a little more of a substantial process for them to have to go through. So it gives us the ability through the code to say 25%. And that's, it's a fair, it's a fair number.
Yeah.
You know, maybe 50%. Maybe they can go 50% if they provide some type of mitigation measures, where they're going to go ahead and, you know, they're going to propose, all right, we're going to go back to do this, but we're going to create, you know, more wetland area, more buffer in, you know, in some other portion of the property. So, you know, it's like a one for one.
A one for two if they're going to mitigate.
Yeah.
We could even do it that way. I mean, that's even fine, yeah, in some cases. But then, once you get to, once you get to that, once you get to that threshold, and it's like, okay, that's it. We're, you know, we're done at that point. Now you're, now you're going to have to go to some other level.
Right.
To deal with this, because we're not going to, we're, don't leave it open to us to have to deal with. Let it go to the next level, whoever it may be. And they're going to have to, but, you know, even at that, the, the measures would have to be huge to let them go that far.
Sure, even if it's 25%, there needs to be some clear criteria.
Right, right. But what's the, right, but the 25%, what's the real, what's the real reason for it?
Yeah.
You know, is it 25% just to get, you know, over the course of, let's say, you know, a certain distance, because you need that to cross a, you need that for crossing to get onto the property. Let's say all the wetland is on the front of the property. They need to cross it. That's something that's come up a bunch of times. You know, this one over at Ketchum Town Road is the last one I remember. I believe they go in the front, I guess there's a wetland right there in front of the property. It goes in, it opened up, you know, into some usable property, which ended, you know, which was quite large, but they only put two lots on it. But, you know, they crossed over it and they, they kind of mitigated a little bit. But they were only encroaching for a short distance. So it's not like they were taking, taking out the whole thing.
Yeah. I had a, something I wanted to raise. Jumping back to the earlier discussion, the concepts that perhaps will be seen in Local Law Four or Five regarding, you know, particularly, right, buildable yield, the concepts of clustering, the concepts of open space, and, and of net lot area. Net lot area gets used a lot in other places. And in the town of Wapanger, it's only used in the multifamily provision of the code, or in sections of the code where you need to calculate your density using the multifamily calculation. The only other metric, the only other metric keeping lots from being overly encumbered is Section 240-18D2. One more time, in case you want to write that down. It's 240-18D2. And it essentially says that however big your lot is, only 10% of it can be, your minimum lot area, only 10% of that can be lands that are underwater, a wetland, or in a flood plain. But net lot area can be very useful and a very simple tool, not just for clustered subdivisions, but for any subdivision. And what it would do is alleviate a problem that we've seen with certain subdivisions where, and I know that this has been a problem for Barbara, where lots get created, they are heavily encumbered by wetland, the wetland buffer, easements, whether they are utility or stormwater. Somebody has bought a new lot and they find out that it's an acre in size, but they've got less than a quarter to work with. Right?
Mural circle, for example.
Yeah. So, and, and so what you can do with a definition for net lot area is a very simple change of your minimum lot area is your net lot area. And your net lot area is going to net out 100%, 50%, 75% of various, and it gets used in the buildable yield definition, right? Various constrained areas. And on that note, something to look at would be areas of steep slopes. In other municipalities that I've worked in, I've never seen anything that is quite so high. The definition here is 25%. The standard is 15 in most places that I've worked with. And what it means is frequently we'll see subdivision applications where we know most of this site is very steep and not really buildable. But they, they get to say, no, look, you know, only 5% of it is steep slopes. And that then leads to the, the section of our code that deals with steep slopes, which says, hey, planning board, you should encourage people not to develop on steep slopes. But it doesn't give the planning board any teeth to stop them. It just says you shouldn't do that. And so if there's a definition for net lot area that meets your minimum lot area, that your minimum lot area is your net, and whatever percentages you want, it can be 100% of wetlands, it can be 50% of steep slopes, it can be, you know, 25% of easement areas. I mean, those percentages can be whatever you want for each of those categories. They can be different for each category. But it's going to be very straightforward for an engineer, for an applicant to come in and say, okay, this is my minimum lot area. And then you've got, you know, these huge, heavily encumbered lots where people are coming in, trying to make these big subdivisions, and they can't, they can't create these encumbered lots.
Just to add to that, so many subdivisions have recently been created that have wetlands and a buffer. And we don't want them encroaching in the buffer. But because of the way the code is, if we don't change it, we have lots being created that after they go out their back door, they have 18 feet or 30 feet. You can't put a pool, can't put a shed. It encumbered, they constantly at the ZBA. But if you have an acre of land or better, then the house needs to be moved up, or maybe you have to lose a lot. But everyone deserves a backyard. You're spending a lot of money for a house. We have a beautiful town. We should be able to let people have recreation in their backyard.
Absolutely.
And right now, there's nothing that this board can stop a developer from doing that. And I think that has to be added.
And moving forward, this protects our future residents when they're buying these homes as well.
Correct. Because people come in and they're, they, what do you mean, I can't have a big in-ground pool with a cabana? I said, you've only got 35 feet. You don't even, you can't even put, you can't even put like anything, not even a flagpole without a variance. So we need to look at that and create better yards on big lots for people.
And just to, you know, let you folks in on this as well, I received a note from a new property owner in town. And she wrote to me and said, you know, I have an issue with X, Y, and Z on my property. I've come to find out after I buy my home that I have a snow easement, I have a drainage easement, I have a water and sewer easement, and then the road setback easement on top of it. She was, I basically have nothing. I have the area around my $800,000 house.
Yeah.
Which is a postage stamp now. And again, whatever we can do to protect those residents makes code enforcement's job a lot easier.
A lot easier.
And again, it's giving them more property. So this is, these are real issues, folks, that we're dealing with now. So I would, I would definitely welcome that conversation. And we can look at that as well.
I don't know how we feel about Local Law Number Two. I did have a couple of specific questions or comments about Local Law Number Three, unless we want to, unless there's anything else about Local Law Number Two we want to talk about.
I had some granular questions on Local Law Three, so.
Okay.
All right. So I don't know, does anybody else have anything left on, on Two currently? Just, just to go back to, with open space that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that was one of those things where we, with open space, we're going to allow that. Does everybody feel like open space should, should include the wetlands? Or, you know, as the calculation for containing open space?
I think it really.
Or should there be a percentage above and beyond the wetlands and unusable land?
I think it really depends on what mechanism comes later that requires the creation of open space.
Right.
Because as far as I know, we don't have a, you know, open space is discussed, but there isn't, you know, unless there's something that says, if you want to create a cluster subdivision, you need to create this amount of open space. And then open space needs to meet this definition.
Well, open space has to be a certain percentage of the overall usable space.
Yeah.
You know, and that would turn, net out the, you know, the slopes and the wetlands. And then that limits them to the number, you know, to the number acres they're, you know, they're playing with in order to, to work with the, you know, the conservation portion of it. You know, I mean, that way you know that you're actually going to get something. And then maybe at least a percentage of that is going to be usable space for something, if there is recreation or something else down the road.
So are you saying your usable space is like outside of like the.
So, yeah, so like, well, would potentially be usable space is what I'm saying. So it's, you know, you're netting out the steep slopes, just as we do with the exercise with the other, you know, the other subdivision. You know, they're supposed to net out the steep slopes, net out all the wetland area. You know, but that would go into the conservation space. Why not, you know, say, okay, well, if that, all that area equated to 50% of the land, you know, or let's say 30% of the land, you know, and you have a thing in there that says, all right, well, you need to conserve at least, you know, a certain percentage of that to use this chapter of the code. That would give you something, you know, other than just, you know, swamp land.
Swamp land and slopes.
You know, a mountain crap.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, I'll just, you know, just an idea, that's all, just to give it a little more, just to give it a little more definition to it.
Now, I do have to ask folks, are you going to be, are you going to be providing the town board with a memo with your recommendations or concerns or?
Well, being it's being recorded, I can, we could, we could authorize the planner to go ahead and jot down all these notes and provide a memo if you wish.
I mean, I think we're taking great notes right now, but I think that that would be valuable as well.
No, no, I think that's.
I think that would be a very wise move to have a planner or somebody put something together for the town board.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, I could definitely.
Aside from recording. Thank you, Bruce. I get it.
We could definitely get it done. And it's a lot easier that it's on tape, so we'll.
Well, we can compare both, if we have both.
Yep.
We have a board meeting in a week, right?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So two weeks.
We have another little memo, and then we can discuss it at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right.
Continue, please. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure that we were going to have something in writing, because these are very valid points here, and I don't want to lose them.
I agree.
Quick question on the 19th. Is that a public hearing on both Local Laws Two and Three?
Correct. Yes. And again, depending on how the conversation goes, we can of course keep the public hearing open until September. Again, this is all part of the free-flowing conversation.
So the memo should come out.
Right, yeah. Well, as I said, we do have some time still to go here, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we jump into Local Law Number Three? Malcolm, you didn't pick any, right, that's not in your memo, right?
No, I've got some, I've got some comments about Local Law Number Three.
Well, before you start that, I think, in my understanding, this puts back changes that were made that helped facilitate certain projects. And, you know, I think the planning board should be very supportive of these.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, no, no. And I agree, like I said, I agree with them. I don't have, you know, I, you know, I just, some of them, I think it's, you're going to have, at the end of the day, you need to get a, just vet it out with the attorney. You know, so we don't have either of them here. As long as they're fine with it, because again, I know, I understand with the bouncing back and forth of, you know, of one of the, you know, one of the codes, the gas station code, I mean, Alwin Air, that's been an issue. I know that there's been multiple variances granted based upon, you know, some of the stuff. It's opened up, you know, some other legal challenges, things like that. I mean, those are the things we have to worry about. Again, it's, it might not be, you know, I, I agree with, I agree with the changes, you know, let's, you know, you want to put a restriction on it, that's fine with keeping, you know, the distances and where, you know, but at the end of the day, the thing, because what, the existing infrastructure is out there, opens up the door possibly to more variances or, you know, legal challenges down the road if somebody with deep pockets really wants to put a gas station somewhere.
And again, that's, that's all part of the conversation.
Yeah.
But I do want to note too, folks, just all transparency here, this law. But I do want to note too, folks, just all transparency here, this law was upheld for decades. In fact, there is a vacant gas station at the corner of Old Hopewell and Route 9, still to this day, because of this law being in place. So I know that there was comments in the past by previous people saying, oh, well, it's because of lawsuits. Well, the town of Wappinger won every single one of those lawsuits. I mean, at the end of the day, that gas station is still empty because of it. Not saying that we want that, and since I've been supervised, we found five different investors to try to take that property on, but the property owner does not want to sell that property. You know, we can only. Yeah. The unsolved screwdriver murder, yes, yes. So, but just, just for perspective, again, that gas station law was upheld, and there's a full, you know, that's a perfect example.
Yeah, local law three, I had a couple of comments. One, it's more when I looked at the, some of the tax, some places, it's distance prohibited within X number of feet of a residential district, other times within X number of feet of a residential district boundary. So we just need to pick one.
In particular, we're talking about, we are talking about 24052, gasoline, is that what we're talking about?
I think it came up with vape shops and some of that.
Yeah, it comes up with vape shop as well.
It's just.
Well, stay specific to the one, and then, just vape shops, I got, I just have a comment regarding that too.
Do you, do you want to start with the first one? We can go, go through, I believe, or.
Yeah.
The first one's open space, we covered open space, we're comfortable? We want to move on?
All right, I'm gonna go back to the, let's go back to the big.
Yeah, I figured maybe we go at the beginning here, I mean, open space, but then we can go to, we already covered that, we can go to the definition of smoke and vape shop.
Yeah, there's a collector road, and then smoke and vape.
And while you're looking that up, folks, one of the things that I raised when I first took office was the amount of these smoke and vape shops that are popping up all over the town. A lot of them are right on top of each other. And when I had asked Barbara, she said, well, they're, they're retail.
Yeah, we've never had anything to divert, you know, to say it's retail. And this code at least gives us a little teeth.
Exactly. We are super specific on some things, folks, right down to massage parlors, which we need to be, which, you know, we've said at the town board.
Which we have to add to.
Yes, we have to add to, but massage parlors, you know, we're cracking down on the illegal ones in the town. We've shut down four so far.
In the long run, it's gonna help every board we have.
Absolutely.
Just be able to make a clear-cut decision based on a code, say, sorry.
Yeah, and that's the thing with, with smoke and vape shops, for example, right out in the New Hackensack Hamlet there, the New Hackensack Plaza, you all know which business is located there, and 376 in Maloney Road. So there's a smoke and vape shop located in that plaza, directly across the street, and I believe Kevin Lund used to own it, or currently does, it's like an office building in there. There's now a smoke and vape shop in there. There's also a deli, which I was shocked to see that in there as well, and then the gas station. So you have three locations that sell smoke and vape products right in that corridor. And again, my concern is, you know, what, what kind of impact they have in our community. The Village Wappingers Falls is already allowing cannabis shops along Route 9. That's fantastic, that, that's great for them. But again, we need to look at the rest of the town here and see where this could be an impact to neighborhoods, to children, things like that. So that's why we added smoke and vape shop, it was not previously listed.
So what I would mention, the definition for it describes that it would be considered based on proportion of floor area dedicated to the display and sale of said products, and the proportion of total revenue derived from said products. And I don't know what the number should be, but that needs to be more specific, because otherwise.
That's unenforceable.
Yeah, because I was just gonna.
It's unenforceable.
So you come in and you want to open one, and you will tell me, I don't know what, I don't know yet how much this is, you know, how much space I'm gonna devote to each thing. And some of these businesses are very changing, it depends what the, the product of the day is, so they might get this more than that. And then the overall marketing or branding, some people will tell me, I don't even know what my advertising is gonna be, like, can I put banners up? So I think that's gonna be hard.
Adult bookstores, they talk about 20% of the, I think they use the term product. If you're that amount, then you become a, you're categorized as that. So you might think about some percentage.
Yeah, percentages, because then if we go in after they open and they've exceeded that, now we have something for enforcement, but I don't see how someone coming in rock can even give us those numbers.
I don't think it makes sense, right? Because a deli that sells cigarettes, a deli that has a license to sell cigarettes is not a vape or tobacco shop necessarily.
And there's actually a crackdown going on over the last couple of weeks throughout New York, and it happened today, actually upstate, where they are going and closing down vape shops in huge clusters. I think three of them were raided by the state police up in Montgomery County today. I know Suffering area had, Middletown had a bust, so.
Is the idea that they don't have a license to sell tobacco?
Yeah, there's more going on in the vape shops.
It's based upon them selling, selling either. They're saying, no, why not, you know, this would be to prevent the, you know, the poss, you know, the, the opening of vape shops, or even, you know, like Malcolm was saying with a deli. I mean, a deli is, what, 10%? You know, 10% of the floor space is, is used for selling tobacco and vape products? You know, then why not put that number in here to, you know, to further, you know, so that way these guys come in, it's like, oh, you know, only 10% of space, I gotta, I have to figure a way to fill the other 90% of my store with something else? You know, I mean, that's, I think that may make more sense, you know, just so they're not dedicated to it.
Would the planning board feel comfortable with a 10%?
I, I definitely feel, I think 10%, but.
You're, you're put valuable as well in Beacon. You're, you're in good value.
Beacon doesn't restrict it right now.
But we've seen how it's been taken over.
Oh, it's been taken, well, it's, you know, the cannabis, cannabis is the big push right now.
No.
Cannabis is the big push, so.
But I think on the 10%, there's the floor area, then there's the product, 10% of the products on the store. So if somebody, you know, opens up a store, puts smoke and vape on 10%, leaves the rest of it blank.
We can use this 10% of both, both the product and floor, yeah, do it that way, because, exactly. You get the joker that comes in and says, well, hold on, I got, you know, I have this, I have this 100 square foot store, and I'm gonna put only 10 square foot of space, you know, using it for a vape shop.
Somewhere to sit at.
Yeah, exactly, so, yeah. It kind, it makes, you know, that, that makes sense, the limitation. At the end of the day, it does help with enforcement, because, you know, once they, once they get a, you know, their certificate of occupancy to operate the business, and, you know, they're doing whatever, and, you know, you know, six months later, they decide to change around their whole, you know, thing, and somebody walks in and says, hold on, you know, you're, you're violating, you know, you've violated the definition of the code, you know, you can force them into reverting back, or, you know, possibly just, you know, making them look for a new spot in another place.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can we also put into the code that, that the building department can ask for their business license, et cetera? Because some of these businesses may not even be in legally.
That's the problem.
And I think that we should be allowed to ask for a business license, and on specific businesses, they need a license, like a hairdresser, a massage parlor. Some of them need, they should have to produce the license to do what they're performing. And I think that stops a lot. Right now, we're, that's what we're doing with some of these. They don't have licenses for what they're supposed to be doing, so it allows us legally to shut them down till they obtain these licenses if they can.
And it standardizes it across the board.
Doesn't the law say that they have to display that license in a, in a?
Yes, but they've been using a cosmetology license, but if you read it, that doesn't give them the right to do certain things.
Yeah, like you can't do nails, yeah.
Right, and it's specific, but also a business license, and the state police and the sheriffs, Dutchess County sheriffs, have asked us for help in some of the enforcement, and they're the ones that recommended making sure we have.
Folks, by way of background on this, this is, you know, not intended to be an overreach, I think, this conversation, but we have illegal businesses that are operating in the town under the auspices of a massage parlor, let's say. And they're not legitimately doing that work. Again, I, I think that that's for further discussion, and again, something to consider.
But for any type of business.
I, I understand where you're coming from, Barbara, it's just before we, I think it's something that you really need to get the attorneys involved with, because it involves more than just adding a section to this code. It involves, there's a liability involved with it, also the enforcement of it. Business licenses are, you know, enforced by New York State Department of State, Department of Licensing. They turn around, they, they enforce all, it's their rules, it's not the local entity's rules. If you come across those, you're technically, from my understanding, is you're supposed to report it to them. They're supposed to investigate it, and then they can, you know, pull a license, and then the business can be closed. I don't think that you can do it. You probably do it, but I, again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't think anybody in this room are lawyers, so I think we need to, I think really rely heavily on, on counsel to make sure that, that that's, that you're going down the right route, because you can turn around and shut somebody down on a basis that you weren't allowed to do it, and then they have grounds to come back after the town for something.
Like I said, this is a much greater topic.
I think that really needs to be hashed out. I, I know where you're coming from, and I think it really should be picked, it should be picked up in here as well, but, I think just out of clarity, you know, just making sure that there is grounds for that.
Can be a, a condition of the special permit, that they need to demonstrate that, you know, they have this license.
That would then in turn require a special permit.
Well, I think that they are, they're creating for vape shop.
Creating a, a special, for vape shops, yes.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
I'm talking, I think we're talking about some of the, you know, such as, you know, because then you'd have to group them together with, you know, beauty salons, massage parlors, I think even the nail salons, I think they're licensed too.
Yes, they are.
All these, all these different people, it's not even, it's the business's license, it's the actual individual person, you know, barber shop, you know. You'd have to do that, and then every one of those who would come, they'd have to come in and get a, every new one would at least have to come in for a special permit in front of the board, we'd have to issue it.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to.
That would be a condition of the special permit.
I don't know that that needs to be done, but while we're drafting the, I mean, that's, that is a larger, and a separate code. But while we are drafting the section of, the, the special permit section for a smoke and vape shop, one of the conditions can be, you need to demonstrate to the plan, to the planning board or to the building department that you have a license from the state to sell tobacco products, which seems fair and evident, right? I mean, that's.
All right, I get definitely more discussion, I definitely think that's. Okay, I believe the next one is alienation restricted on page 32.
Yeah, I don't, I.
I had a question about the, the, the section number, chapter 247 dash 14, and then you also referenced section 247 of the general municipal law.
Yeah, that's clearly a typo.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to.
It was already updated.
Highlight it, perfect.
Yeah, so that's a typo you're talking about.
Yeah, I figured, we don't have a section 247.
That was clearly a typo.
All right.
So is that going into?
That was not the official law that was distributed, that was.
A draft, yeah. Then is it going into section 240 dash?
Yeah, it.
I guess, I don't, I don't have a copy of the new one, that's why.
Yeah, I can, I can pull up exactly which one, but yes, it's going into the prop, 247.
I'll take a look at the new draft when I put together a memo, and.
We, we, we.
We'll correct that, yes. Okay.
This is what, next one would be tattoo parlors.
Yeah.
That's the one that, I see, see from the last version, it was updated regarding zoning districts. But then the conversation comes in as, you know, the, just the NV zone, which was the only one listed last time, that would be the one that's most closely impacting residential neighborhood.
So we've, we've included, we've expanded it to include all of the different commercial zones now. Basically, by way of background on this topic, it came up to the town board in a formal letter that there is a resident that was looking to open a tattoo shop in a certain zoning district. And we found out we don't call out tattoo parlors, really, in, in many of these zoning districts, actually, they're really discouraged. And again, in modern times, tattoos are not seen as the same way that they were in the past. They don't attract biker gangs anymore, you know, they're more seen as an art. And again, whether you want to have them or not, as a personal preference, I personally do not. But again, it was something that came up, especially in the new, the neighborhood business zone, which you've noted, Chairman, as a very restrictive use. But by way of background on this, that same neighborhood business zoning district has smoke and vape shops, it has liquor stores, and in fact, it has the only adult entertainment strip club in, in the county. Just by way of background on that, we have a strip club in neighborhood business district, which predates it, understandably. But again, we allow, we currently have a strip club in a neighborhood business zone. This one particular business that was looking to come in to the neighborhood business emphasized art. He was gonna have, I believe, a certain percentage as an art gallery, and then a very small square footage to be a tattoo parlor. So the town board, obviously, we floated it out, that went out to everyone, and, and I think, you know, everyone was pretty amenable to it. And we wanted to float this out and see if everyone was in favor of allowing it on all the commercial, you know, areas.
I think it makes sense, I do too.
It's all very, very, it's already.
It's fine, it's fine, I just said the conflict might come in with the, you know, with the distance. So you're, you know, you have the distance from a, usually neighborhood, neighborhood business usually letting a residential, you know, you know, usually residential properties, and then you have something that's gonna turn around, and you got a 400-foot distance as well from, so it might limit, it's gonna limit out a lot of the, a lot of the locations within the NV zone.
Perhaps residential structure?
Yeah.
I think number three needs to be looked at, because it wouldn't work at Chelsea Ridge. There's residential behind, one on Route 376.
Of course, now, that's why I'm saying residential structure, rather than the district or the property. So if it's distance from the building, obviously Chelsea Ridge, the apartments, they're further back from the mall. That might be something that we'd be open to.
Yeah, maybe change it to building.
You could look at it that way, yeah, yeah. It's something that's just, they're so, they're so close in proximity to one another, that's why I said the distance becomes a, in most cases, will become a conflict.
The backyard is, is fewer than 400 feet. My only comment was, and it may have already been picked up in the new draft, typically, item number seven would be, it wouldn't necessarily be in the special permit language, it would be an attachment to for section 240. I don't know if that's already been changed or not. Yeah, but the proximity, that's a very good point.
Valid, yes, very valid point. Anything else on tattoo?
No, on tattoos, and it just obviously has to update the, the tables, you know, the use tables in the code.
Yeah, that attachment too, yeah.
All right, so, anybody else have anything on tattoos?
Nope.
Then there's smoke and vape shop.
Smoke and vape, yeah.
That looks good.
We kind of hit, we kind of hit most of that.
And that, that one, by the way, came from City Albany, you know, you'd like to know where we got some of these.
Yeah, City Albany, I was gonna say, there's somebody up there that, it was actually, I looked at a bunch of codes before, when this first came out. This was, when we talk about percentages, and I don't, I forgot which one it was, it was one of the cities upstate. They have it in there with a percentage in there, which makes sense.
They use 10%?
I don't remember the number, but I'm, I'm just thinking, my feeling is down for someone, because it falls in line with, kind of like Malcolm's description of a deli, just, it's minimal. You know, you keep it down to nothing, and it becomes, you know, accessory sale to something else. It's not 100% dedicated to, you know. So they're not, you know, it's not their only business to try to get, you know, get people to come in and just buy, you know, cigarettes and vaping products.
This may have already been picked up in the new draft, but the, the last sentence of the legislative intent, in my copy at least, references tattoo parlors instead of vape and smoke shops.
The last section of.
The last, the last sentence of legislative intent.
Yep, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any, any comments on the smoke and vape shops? Everybody's good? All right. Jump to.
35, right?
Gasoline filling stations.
So obviously, we just preface this before, this was the previous code that was upheld in this town for decades, and it's basically putting that right back into place.
All right.
And in reality too, I mean, I, I think we have our, our fair share of gasoline filling stations now in this town, and I don't know if we want to even give any sort of leniency moving forward on, on that, so. And this is also a piece of legislative. moving forward on that, so. And this is also a piece of legislation, too, that Dutchess County, the legislature is considering. They're looking to enact this in the health code. So this way, they, basically gasoline filling tanks would not be permitted in the Dutchess County health code within a certain number of feet. So this is really going in line with what a greater movement initiative in our county is looking to do, really, based on what happened here, so.
All right, so nobody has any, nothing on this one? Let's move on to, let's move on to access and required street frontage.
Yes. Yeah, this was an interesting one for me. I mean, I, I'm glad that you're looking at flag lots. I think that in general, flag lots are all too often used to shoehorn extra lots into subdivisions where they don't make sense. And the way that the code is drafted, they are discouraged but not restricted, and so they, you know, the, the planning board only has so much teeth to hold them back, right? I was curious about the 100 feet, though, because there are a couple of different zoning districts in our code that have frontages and lot widths that are smaller than 100 feet. And so, one of the recommendations that I made in the, in my comment memo was just the idea of restricting, you know, like, you can, you can design a flag lot up to, you know, your, your new frontage, your access strip has to be a certain percentage of what is required by that code without going below a certain number. But that would be a way around this, right? Because with certain, most of these subdivisions are not going to be in the R20 where you can have an 85-foot wide lot. Most of them are going to be in, in districts that are larger than that. But it does present the, the inconsistency between, you know, this section regarding flag lots and a bunch of different zoning districts that.
And, you know, that is the reality throughout the town. I mean, we have some neighborhoods that were old, you know, some are communities, some are cottages, and you have little houses right on top of each other, and they're ridgeway around a lake that's not there, and they might be along a private road or, or, you know, a paper street that does not exist. Again, real examples here, folks. I mean, that, that's understandable. We can take a look at that, because they're existing houses. We know what's there, and that limits what they can do. What, what we're really concerned about is the hundreds of acres of open space that still exist in this town. And when you go to subdivide or you try to add something in, I mean, quite frankly, I don't know if we want to have more flagpole lots or more town roads that the highway department needs to maintain. That was our concern, and, you know, the 50-foot allows for a town road, you know, that's really the perfect, you know, width, allows for a driveway. 100 feet, you have more, more room to say, all right, we're going to have a nicer house here.
Well, what way of thinking about this? It just prompted me, you might specify the 100 feet except in the following instances, and then it gets to the two or three districts that have a minimum frontage of less than 100 feet, and maybe take something.
I mean, you can get as specific here as you want.
So have the 100 feet, except in these instances.
R15.
Yeah. And again, the, the large lots that we're trying to prevent subdivisions that are full of radial lots that don't make any sense are not zoned R15 or R20, right?
Well, that's, that's it. And, and, you know, even the R20 zones, there are some areas that, you know, have space, you know, some developable area, and I don't know if we want to allow that many homes in there. So again, we have to look at this. Again, you know, we'll, we'll take whatever comments under advisement. It's just something that we have to really look at, because it's a clear, it's a clear and present threat to the quality of life of a lot of people that live here, a lot of existing homes. And if we're just going to weasel in a, you know, a 50-home subdivision or apartment complex right behind someone.
Yeah, but I mean, this is the frontage on a road.
Yes.
You know, for a subdivision only has to be, you know, the right of way is 50 feet. Actually, yeah, 50 or 25, yeah, 50 feet.
Put a road in.
Yeah, so you need the 50 to get the road in. So those large lots, you're still going to, even if you're expanding that width, you're still going to, you know, the, the road is only 50 feet wide, and with a subdivision, that wouldn't apply because a subdivision wouldn't be considered a flag lot.
That's right. So it's something that, again, we should have to look at.
Yeah, but the, yeah, the subdivision, you know, just for a flag lot, subdividing an existing lot with a, with a flag lot behind it, you know, it's, it'll prevent those things from happening, you know, if they don't have the frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I, yeah, I don't see the, either way, I don't think it's going to make a difference.
There's a downside to it, though.
Yeah.
It's good going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the flag lots?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's modification of lot requirements, 240-19. I guess we're talking more, this is the 240-19B changing it to clustering.
I don't have this changed. This is an old one. I've got, I've got an old copy, so I don't have this.
This is the updated one that was sent.
Again, changing conservation following the standard set by New York State to make that clustering.
Clustering subdivision. So A, A would remain as the average density subdivision, and B would be changed to clustering subdivision?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Would you want to move the definition proposed in local law number two for clustering to the zoning code then, if that's where it's going to appear?
I believe that we're already doing that.
Oh, okay, that's in the new, yeah, that's in the new, that's what I've seen.
Again, I apologize. Everyone's got a different copy handed to them by someone else, so the official copy that was submitted by the town clerk, God does call for that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's not in there, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we don't have the, yeah, we don't have the definition of clustering.
And then what's the?
Which doesn't, doesn't help, but then, just, you know, the addition, I guess the addition to that section, other than changing the title of it, item number four, there was a section added that, that if the, basically, it was edited, but dwelling units permitted may be detached, semi-detached, attached, or attached structures provided that there is no more than four dwelling units in any single structure, and provided, and this was the addition, that in the subdivision is not in conflict with provisions of the master plan and complies with existing town of Wapanger zoning code for which the parcel is currently zoned. So.
And again, trying to standardize.
That's, so I'm trying to get just clarification. What is that really supposed to mean?
Well, you know, again, in trying to standardize this with New York State code, we're, we're trying to make sure that things go where they're supposed to go.
Right, but it's a, yeah.
Again, trying to put, let's say, residential apartments, you know, high-density apartments in an area that's zoned, single family, that's, that's calling that out specifically. This way, there's not some sort of misconception what we could do there.
So it's, so basically, if it's, if it's zoned as for use as a single family or, you know, or townhouse, I guess, I don't know, I'm not sure how, how it's written here, but, but then it doesn't affect with the, the size of the lot? Okay. That's just saying for a little more clarification. Again, if it's, if it's one acre zoning and, you know, you're, you're trying to, clustering is trying to bring everything together, you know, it doesn't make sense because you're never going to be able to get the number of units on one acre lots within that little parcel. You have to have some give there. That's just a little, you know, I, I think it just needs to be clarified a little better because, you know, then it can be interpreted better. Because I believe this is going to be one of those that will definitely come up for a challenge once it goes into effect.
So any sort of recommendations, you know, planner, the planning board might be willing to give, that'd be great. Again, we don't want to get drawn down a rabbit hole. We want to make it very clear as to what is, what is needed.
But again, I just, you know, it's, in my opinion, it was a little too vague. That's put that way.
Yeah, I was, I was, my only concern was that up until that point, the provisions of this are allowing the planning board latitude to modify the requirements of that, of the pertinent sections of the zoning code to allow for the clustering and the creation of open space, as long as it doesn't conflict with the provisions of that chapter.
And again, clustering, clustering single-family homes, a single-family area, that, that makes sense. Clustering to put apartments and then a little bit of this, a little bit of that, you're completely throwing the local zoning out the window. So what good is having a local zoning code at that point? You know, and again, I understand the concept of good planning behind clustering. Let's say if you rolled the town of Wapanger back and started again, then, yeah, you would do, you know, clustering around Hamlet Centers, you'd have downtown streets, but we're already developed. And, and so the concept of clustering, for me, is, is a little odd, because now you're just trying to put as much density into an area, and we're already the smallest geographical town, and we're already the second most densely populated. So to me, it just seems a little counterproductive right now.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's why, you know, just leaving it as, you know, conservation, you know, as conservation subdivision, enhance the, enhance what's there to provide so that when they come in, it's, it's not just, all right, you can go ahead and do this, but it's also laying out ground rules that you need to preserve X number, you know, X amount of land as well, you know, that you're going to preserve it. That way, it gives them, it's basically, they're giving the town something, and in return, you're going to give them a little relief to get those same number of units on a smaller parcel, you know. And if it's single family, if that's what you're referring to, is it just, it has to be that same type of housing, then, yeah, then it just should be, you know, just a little, little clearer. But clustering, I, you know, again, I don't know if it's really needed to change the, to change the term.
Would it be four units in a single, in a?
You can even, you can even erase that, but it would only, even if you wanted to do that, you'd do it as a, as if, then again, you know, I, my head bounces back and forth between two different zoning codes. But I'm not sure, within this one, do we allow for townhouses?
Previously, I mean, without looking at these, yeah.
So townhouses, townhouses would be.
Dwelling units permitted may be, may be detached, semi-attached, or attached structures provided that there be no more than four dwelling units in any structure. In the past, I have.
So fewer to do like a duplex.
You would have like four townhomes next to each other that share walls, I think is the maximum density for one structure that that provision would allow for.
Yeah.
And then.
Just to clarify, right, to clarify, it's still technically a single-family home, you know, but.
Yeah, it's just an attached structure.
So that would be it. If, if the townhouses aren't going to be allowed within any, within any residential district, then, you know, then you don't even need that attached, the attachment at that point. You just get rid of it if you're not allowing for townhouses or duplexes.
I mean, you and I made the part on the views on this, but I think with clustering, you're able to have these different housing types. If it's allowed, say it's not permitted by the code, but with the clustering, you're allowing these housing types in exchange for more open space. That is part of the code, and I think it brings some advantages in terms of more open space preserved, and also may help get at the issue of the cost of housing in this town. And by allowing, you know, these units with, forward to a building, you're, you're able to provide those units at a lower price than if they were distinct detached, single-family units.
I would add here about our, our conversation earlier regarding open space and what constitutes open space and usable open space.
That's how we address that.
A possibility of density bonuses in exchange for open, valuable open space, usable open space.
That's the valuable.
Yeah, usable, something that is not land that is left over. But I would mention, and again, I have not seen the most recent draft, but you were talking about that this whole thing is built around the idea that that open space is created, but this section of the code is actually scripted around the idea that it would allow for this to happen. It doesn't require it. There's no mechanism in this that says you can get as many units as you would otherwise, and in exchange, you know, a certain percentage of the lot needs to be contiguous open space that is usable. That doesn't, it's sort of implied in the conservation subdivision that if they're allowed to cluster, valuable contiguous open space areas will be then available. But it isn't until now with the new definitions of open space and potential future mechanisms that would require it, that that open space actually needs to be contiguous, that, that open space is not allowed to be land that is left over and, and unusable. But, I mean, I think that this is.
That's typically what it is.
Yeah.
Do we also label the leftover land that has to be usable open space as not to be further subdivided 10, 20 years later? Because if you, you allowed that to cluster, then that land has to stay open. It should, so it can't be further developed down the road.
And, and again, you know, putting in whether it's conservation easements, which this town board has been very good at doing now and advocating for, I mean, I don't know. I think that's an open, you know, conversation that we need to continue to have. I don't think that the town of Wapanger wants to continue to buy up or take more property on because, quite frankly, you know, areas like Fieldstone, Kendall, and, and Hamlet Court, those conservation park districts offer a great burden to the town by having to basically maintain people's backyards where there's encroachment. So whether it's conservation easements on privately owned properties to ensure that this is never developed moving forward, I think that would be the best.
Yeah.
Best bet for all of us.
Part of the subdivision being the creation of an open space that then needs to be, you know.
Forever green.
Forever green and managed or maintained or upkept by the homes, the, the HOA, or, you know, I mean, the property owner that is renting out, you know, whatever it is.
Do we have a definition for usable rather than?
I think it's, I think it is included in local law number two, but I don't have the most recent draft.
It wouldn't be wetlands, these slopes.
Yeah.
You know, it would be usable, would be something that technically could be built on, but we choose to keep it open.
Yeah, as long as we have a definition.
There's also a lot of land that is not included, that is specifically said this does not count as open space. My favorite element of that being yards that are required. You know, the, the space in between those two buildings, the 100 feet setback in between the two buildings, that's not open space. You haven't met your, your criteria by following the bulk setback requirements of the zoning.
And I think changing the grade thing there to 215 from like 25 where we are now is going to expand that.
And I, I think that whether or not in a cluster subdivision or in a standard subdivision, if we look at a net lot area that, that is, is looking to protect these, we won't have the same issues. We won't have these subdivisions, whether they are standard or clustered, looking to build far more lots than they can reasonably take on.
And, and again, this, this is all meant to try to preserve the quality of life of this town as much as possible. We want to foster innovative development where it makes sense. We want to have walkable downtown Hamlet Centers and walkable downtown commercial corridors. But again, for the residents that live here, the thing that makes this town most attractive is its open space features, is the fact that we have some characteristics here in this town, whether it's farmland, open spaces, wetlands, whatever it may be. We do have a beautiful town. So that's the idea, is to foster and, and promote innovative development where it most makes sense, and then make sure that people's biggest investment, their home, their property values is protected. So I do appreciate the planning board, your time and, and consideration on all this. I think this was a fruitful conversation. I'm looking forward to your written comments as well. If you don't need anything else from me.
Just the one, just the one last one, is you have to, you have one last change in here, under 213-3, I guess, which is going into stormwater.
Yes.
And just under cluster subdivision, you're changing the cluster subdivision that the SWIP has to be approved by the town board. All the other, any other subdivision, any other type of site plan, special permit use, regardless, that would all be done by the planning board. I mean, why, why would you put that back to the, you know, to the, to the town board?
I think.
Because on the front side, on the front side, all the town board's got to approve, you know, the conceptual plan that's going to go forward, but something such as stormwater, stay consistent, we're just leaving it all with the, leaving it all with the planning board to go forward. It's just adding a, it's adding an additional step for this particular thing that really doesn't serve a purpose unless you were to do all of it. And even that, it wouldn't make any sense because the SWIP is so integral to the project at hand, and, you know, the engineer, the planning board's engineer is going to review the SWIP. They're going to go over everything and do that. So I just, I just don't understand the necessity for it, you know, for that one particular thing, and maybe just leave it alone for the planning board.
That's something we can definitely look at.
I think it just, it's just going to simplify it. It's just, you know, you're adding, adding another layer that really doesn't need to be there. If the town board is reviewing the. If the town board is reviewing the, you know, the approval process for the, you know, clustered or conservation subdivision on the front side, you know, they should be comfortable with it at that point, that it's okay to give to the planning board, they can follow with the rest of the way through, and then once it's done, they can, you know, give the approval and go forward, because that's usually the way, you know, the normal process, so it's something that should be considered. I don't see that, I don't see the need for it.
We can definitely consider that.
I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that.
No, I agree, agree.
Agreed?
Yeah. Yeah, why make more?
Yeah. All right, so with that, we're to a blank page at the end, so
Thank you.
Anything we, anybody have anything else we want to discuss? Yeah, you guys want to open up the floor, anybody here, you want to let anybody make comments to us regarding any of these things?
Sure.
If there's anybody here that wants to speak, wants to make any comment.
Very important meeting.
Huh?
Thank you for your diligence. There's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of things I agree with and a lot of things I don't agree with, so I look forward to hearing from my colleagues. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
I think this is a long overdue
Do you have copies of what you're reading from?
I think, I think we all have different copies, but I can send you
How about we, I'll
Updated.
I'll follow, I'll follow up tomorrow, and I'll see if I can get everybody, I can get everybody the most recent copy and get that circulated, see that you guys can get that as well.
We get all the comments and then send the final, you know, send it out to them, because now it's going to be, you're going to put something together, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, a summary of what we've discussed here.
Exactly, whatever we discussed tonight.
I, I for one support this. I think this is great that we're looking at long overdue changes to things that always seem to mess up our works, like, give us a hard time moving forward with some projects, with all these gray areas.
Or put a stop to them.
Right.
Yeah. No, but this is
I think it's a good initiative.
It was, it was definitely, this is a good process, I think this is not going to be, it sounds like this isn't going to be the last one. You know, I think we're, there's probably going to be other things coming down the road, so we'll go through with that, but I think at this point, I think we've got a lot of stuff out on the table, I think Malcolm's got a little homework to do for us.
Write something up.
And I think that's it.
Long run, our lives are going to be much easier.
You're good with everything?
It's not great.
Things cutting.
All right. So with that, I guess entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.[1795.12]